And. I war pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, call.
Councilmember Bump?
Here.
Councilmember Emerald Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Happy?
Excused.
Councilmember Keller?
Excused.
Councilmember Seager?
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Here.
Marilyn?
Here.
Additions or amendments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Adoption of the consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the, uh, need to, uh, to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, uh, the minutes of the March tenth to twenty twenty five council meeting and ratification of the bills in the amount of, seventy four thousand five hundred and thirty nine dollars and eighteen cents. Please comment.
Number three second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay. All ayes, no nays. All right. Appearances of interested citizens to share their ideas and perspectives on issues facing our community. And Jordan, you wanna do yours first?
Yeah, I can do mine first.
Okay.
All right, uh, so I had received a comment via email, uh, over the weekend that a constituent would like read.
You have a name?
Rachel Najjar. N A J J A R. I hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly. Uh, hello, my name is Rachel Najjar and I am concerned resident of Cascade Locks. Two weeks ago, the city came by and changed my perfectly fine street light and installed a quite hideous looking, in my opinion, LED street light right in front of my house. The aesthetics, however, are not my main concern, though I must say it did make our neighborhood feel less welcoming. I understand that people have been led to believe that LED lighting saves money, energy, and is better for the environment, but it is important to research everything and make decisions that are best for our community. A few years ago, I had this conversation with Councilwoman Baker and emailed her several article articles about the risks of LED lighting. I also spoke with city administrator Zimmerman and our current city administrator. I see that it was not enough and I would now like to share my information with you. The American Medical Association has issued warnings to the world about the dangers of LED lights in articles titled Light Pollution: Adverse Health Effects of Nighttime Lighting in 2012 and a second report in 2016 titled Human Environmental Effects of Light-Emitting Diode Community Lighting. Um, because of the release of these findings, sixteen states and cities across America and Europe have adopted AMA recommendations to keep the outdoor lighting below three thousand K. The lights that are being put up in Cascade Locks are at a maximum high color temperature of five thousand K. This can cause serious suppression in melatonin production, which is critical in the sleep-wake cycle. Blue wavelengths of light are damaging to many forms of life and glare from unshielded light, uh, compromises road safety and infiltrates bedrooms, suppressing melatonin production and undermining sleep quality and duration, and exacerbating susceptibility to make to many kinds of illness. The AMA report shows long-term health impacts of associated circadian rhythm disruptions from this lighting. This includes breast, prostate, thyroid cancer in humans. It has also been linked to sleep and mental health disorders. Obesity, diabetes, and cardiovascular disease have also been found after prolonged exposure. Another issue that can develop over time is calcification buildup in the lenses of our eyes, which will eventually develop into a, into cataract. This calcification, other lens and eye imperfections scatter light in a similar fashion to a dirty windshield. This effect grows more severe with age and is the primary reason that the elderly have a difficult time driving at night under poorly designed street lights. In addition to health hazards, poorly shielded light fixtures can result in a glare, creating a road hazard condition. Un- unfortunately, LED lights can not only cause detrimental effects on humans, but also on plants and animals as well. Birds, insects, and mammals are quoted in many scientific research papers as being impacted by the changes in lighting. Article quote, articles quote that there is a massive decline in species across the globe with LED lights as a large contributing factor. I was shocked when I read that even trees do not shed their leaves on time at the end of the fall season because they are getting tricked into thinking it is daylight from LED lights. It is starting to become common knowledge that all LED street lights, lights are connected to Li-Fi, smart lighting connected to the internet that can listen and watch. How can we be sure that these lights are not for surveillance? LED is a euphemism for smart trackable lights. These, they say that it is to save greenhouse gas emissions, but is really about track, trace, and control. After looking at the website of the manufacturer, I believe it is safe to assume that these lights are in fact weapons that are being used against us. In order to access the information, you have to fill out a lengthy form and give them personal information. What are they hiding? Here are some of the webinars listed on the manufacturer website of the streetlights that are now in our town. Smart City Solutions, Three D Utility Mapping and Structural Forensic Evaluation. Internet of Things, Capabilities of the Safeguarding of Smart HVACR Systems, Interoperability Between Connected IOT Devices. LED lighting is kickstarting the evolution of many smart city initiatives driven by 5G wireless technology and advanced IOT applications. The start stated goal of the smart cities to create a fully integrated, Bertsifitskind city that uses data, technology, and creativity to shape how people and goods move in the future. Portland was one of the first cities to sign up for the transformation, claiming that they want to be America's most prominent smart city. Our current administration is setting the stage for digital currency and the AI infrastructure to complete the final stages in building smart cities around America. Project Stargate, along with the push for digital currency, will lead to more government control and essentially a digital prison. I, wouldn't that be regulated to, you ask? The agency oversight would likely fall under FCC, which claims to ensure the technology won't damage our environment. They also claim that they are protecting human health, wild, wildlife, preserving historic sites and aesthetic blight. The FCC oversaw the nationwide rollout of 5G service, which required almost one million small cell transmitters, often placed on street poles, rooftops, usually near schools and homes. It often takes decades for scientists to get up to date with technologies or products for which the consequences warranted earlier warnings. There is no such research providing the harm of RF radiation that it would be better to live without the convenience, even though the proof of harm is on the increase, the RF radiation guidelines are not. I wouldn't even classify them as safety guidelines as they only address thermal effects of RF radiation. Electromagnetic radiation and wireless program explains that because it takes the heat to directly break the bonds of DNA, the Federal Commission Communications Commission, along with its unofficial collaborative partner, International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection in Europe, set regulatory limits as they were no non-thermal effects. Those regulatory limits have been changed since they were implemented in nineteen ninety six. In spite of five generations wireless in nineteen ninety six, I think we were still using the phones that plug into cars. What are potential personal liability for injuries and deaths revolting resulting from 5G? I would ask if you, your insurer provided liability protection for 5G operations. There is no credible evidence of safety of the 5G lighting emitting diode network. So why is this being pushed? Let's use our money to help residents, not harm them. I am happy to help in any way that I'm able to. I have worked with a few groups across America who have successfully created sitting or city ordinances, placing limits on RF exposure for their own town. This would be the best start of preventing the digital world from spiraling out of control. I love our little town, as I know you do too. Thank you for hearing me and considering that what I have to say. I am praying that you will research for yourself and take action for your family and your entire community. Thank you, Rachel Najjar.
There is now so much research providing the harm of RF radiation and then, um, on the other page, those regulatory limits have never been changed. Just.
Okay, Tiffany. All right. Jerry? If you'd like to come to the desk there and state your name.
Yes, I'm Jerry Patrick Cole. We just moved here in last day and live in, uh, Little Circle. And, uh, we've seen it on this Cascade, uh, neighborhood watch here. That they were talking about sanctuary cities, this, the last meeting, and I just am concerned what happened with that? And are they, you even talking about it or was it something that we should even take into attention?
Did you want to respond, Jordan?
That's, it's up to you all typically don't.
We typically don't answer you during this time. It's just for you to share with us and then we can get back to you.
Okay, well, my concern is that, you know, I know finances are short and it's a smart town or city. And I know being a sanctuary city, there's money involved in it, not a little money, but a lot of money. And it has to come from somewhere. And I know that even our police protection here, you know, is, there's not a lot of it here, you know? And, uh, so we're, we're putting out a lot of money for the police protection and we, you know, there's not enough money to have police protection here twenty-four seven. And I don't think that there would be money enough to have illegals come in here. And that's basically what they are and put them up and spend the money on them. And where's the money gonna come from? So that's my main concern. And if we've got extra money, it should go for police protection.
That's.
Uh, all I have to say.
Jerry, we appreciate you coming.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Public hearings?
No, no public hearings.
Approve. Fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six council goals?
Yeah, uh, so fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Cascade Locks Council Goals facilitated by city manager Klebs and city manager Elder Cascade Locks Council held a retreat on February first, twenty twenty-five to workshop and come to consensus on top goals for the upcoming fiscal year. Attached is a comprehensive review of the process and results of the retreat. Staff now ask council to review and approve the draft document. Once approved, it will be used to finalize the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget and staffing plan.
Second. Reminding this body we can't discuss it without a second. But are?
Has a motion been made? I apologize, I didn't hear it.
Yes, there has been a motion, but no second.
What was the motion?
To approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six council goals as presented. And I reminded council that we can't discuss it without a second.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right, discussion? Do you have discussion?
I do, if I could, sure. Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. So I looked over our top five goals and all the council knows that when we did our retreat, I had reservations that not including city hall review and long-term planning for this facility as not being included. And I continue to have those reservations. And as I look at the, the, the five that we've placed there, I'm of the opinion, if you put something on new, then you should take something off. And what I would like council to consider and possibly support is removing the code enforcement top five and instead adding, uh, basically bumping up the city hall, which, which I understand is tier two. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so switching those, we could put code enforcement as a tier two and putting city hall as a, uh, a top five priority for the council. If I could just speak a little to the, the, my interest there, we continue to experience, uh, you know, examples of a failing building. Um, and we've all seen them. Uh, I think many of the, if the citizens don't know, we had another leaking roof, uh, when staff came into city hall this week. And that's one, a number of, among a, uh, many, many of that have happened the last couple of years. And look, I'm not saying we need to replace city hall tomorrow, but we need to start thinking about it and start planning for it. It's not a small to do. We replaced city hall in Shoreline, it was a five-year project. Uh, it was a huge effort, a lot of planning. Ours is much smaller in scope, of course. City Shoreline was a fifty, the city of fifty thousand, much bigger staff. But it's still a small, it's still a significant undertaking. And I really would like, uh, the city to, to, to get started on that work. And that's why I would like to make those changes to our proposed council goals for, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six. Thank you.
I appreciate moving up the, um, I agree with you, Councilman Seager, moving up the city hall because with the water damage just recently, um, it is becoming not safe for the staff or, um, and we have the ramp or visitors, if there's mold or other things like that happening. And I don't know where to put code enforcement because it's very important to me because it goes with public safety. Uh, as I mentioned in the past, the Hutter County Sheriff said their biggest partner in Cascade Locks is code enforcement. And it also goes with, um, downtown vacant building lots. Um, I believe that code enforcement will be important as we even look at our nuisance code. Uh, and I think as we're communicating more with the residents, um, they want, I've heard, and I can't say how many, maybe from eight or ten, that they want those eight or ten mentioned, that they wanted, uh, consistent code enforcement across everybody. Because it seemed in the past, maybe this person gets a code violation, but the person over here doing something else, same thing. Not good. So that's like code enforcement. Uh, I don't know that we, we're not going to ignore tier two things. I just want this body to help me decide where, if we move up the building, where do we put code enforcement? Does anybody else have an opinion?
What my big suggestion was to switch code enforcement with city hall, put code enforcement into tier two and move, um, the, uh, the evaluate decide on future of city hall building. Where code enforcement is now, is that correct, Bernard?
Yes, exactly.
You think that tier two doesn't make it too low for enforcement? We kind of sick ball.
We, if I may point out, we are already working on some of the tier, um, threes and fours. So.
Okay.
We're, we're trying, you know?
So if this council likes that, I would make a friendly amendment to, um, my, now my, where comes my motion? I would move to approve the fiscal year twenty-two-five council goals. Change, uh, with, uh, with moving, evaluate and decide on the future of city hall building to goal three and moving code enforcement to tier two. That's my friendly amendment.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I mean, he's already working on, I mean, it's not stopping him from working on it because I, we're talking about ground field study, we're talking about other, all sorts of things. So I, I don't think moving it around is, I personally feel necessary. Um, I understand it looks more important if it's on the tier one list. I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you want to move it, I, I would move the audits. I mean, this work not, there's no way that the audits are not going to get done, right? I mean, there's, we have to, we have to get them done.
Yeah.
I mean, I, we could take any of them and, and move them. I just, I don't know. I, without everybody here, I would hate to start moving stuff around. I mean, it's not gonna not get worked on.
Correct. For me, the biggest thing is, like I said, putting the budget and the staffing plan together is these top five are going to get top billing when it comes to resource allocation. If it's, you know, four thirty on a Wednesday afternoon, I happen to have some free time, I'm gonna work on these top five. These are my first priority.
I went through the, um, this recently and like things that are on tier two, initiate city council-led outreach to community. We're already trying to work on that. Um, there's many of these things that are in here that we're already working on. And we have been working on city hall. Um, so I'm with Tiffany, I don't see moving it's gonna make a difference. Um, I think we're all aware of how important it is to that city hall, we need to do something about city hall. Seager?
Thank you. Yeah, look, the way I look at these goals is that they are a prioritization for staff. And when you put them in top five, tier two, tier three, two, four, we are giving very clear, we should be giving very clear guidance, what our priorities are of council. If we don't put city hall in the top five, then we are not giving it the priority that these other top five are. And if I were in, in the city administrator's shoes, I would want to be ver, I would want council to be very clear what their priority. When I'm telling you my priority is those top five, the audits do need to be up there because again, they require a lot of staff work. And that makes sure that the city administrator and the finance, everyone, they're dedicating the needed staff time to get and keep these audits on schedule, uh, you know, in, in a, in a, in a high-quality manner. If you don't do that, then we're sending a message that says, no, that's not our top priority. And I, I think that's, that's would be an error on our part. So that's why I think we should make this switch.
What about you? Chelsea?
So personally, I would prefer that we not remove code enforcement because that is a big one. I maybe move the communication platform and, and put it in position five because, I mean, because we are working on the, excuse me, we are working on the newsletter. Um, and I, I mean, to me, code enforcement is, is pretty key. Like you said, we do have people, I mean, we have different weights of scales, uh, depending on who, on who you know, or I don't, I don't know what the scale is, I'm not making any accusations, but it just seems like different people get treated differently. So I, I really would like to see code enforcement stay on there and maybe change the communication platform position.
But are?
Though, for what it's worth, I would support that, that change. I am very, if, as I rank them, here's how I rank them, audits, city hall, oh, sorry, audits, public funding, city hall, and then communications and code, they're very interchangeable in my mind. I, I give a little edge communications because when I was out campaigning, I just heard a lot of that. I heard a lot of citizens really don't seem to know what's going on much in city hall. And I really feel like that's an inadequate space in our work here. So I have a small edge on that. So I would, I'm, I, I, I'm open to that and I, and I would support that. I guess what I would, I, I would like to propose to the mayor is we really have two options. We can maybe agree on making one of these changes or we could punt it two weeks, get the rest of the council and have the broader council discussion. I feel like if I leave, if I'm not participating in a meeting, I'm trusting the council who are there to just continue governing the city and making decisions. So I don't, I'm not asking for that, but I feel like if this council wants to do that, I'm open to that as well.
All right. Is there a reason why we only have five and maybe not six?
I think it was just limitations on our staff time and resources. Okay. Yeah.
Did you have, there's, okay, I have a question that adds to that.
Okay, go ahead.
What was that? Was that, um, because at the time we did this, we didn't have as much staff as we do now? Or is that's, does, does that change?
No, that doesn't change. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, if we're, if we're all going through and sharing like, what is your, um, top? I would, and I'm willing to amend my, um, motion again, but mine are audits, public safety, funding. Uh, yeah, and I'm not sure the numbers of the rest. I can move them around as this body wants. I'm hoping this body decides tonight because we have a lot to do. But, um, downtown vacant buildings and code enforcement are there. I could happily move communication platform and put, uh, the city hall higher than communication platform. That is my five, and I'd love to hear your top five. I can agree with audits, public safety, code enforcement, downtown vacant buildings, and then, uh, city hall and then move a communication platform to tier two where city hall currently is. I agree with that. Is that ready, Mary Ann?
I'm fine with that. I just don't want, um, the communication to our citizens to, to, uh, you know, stop. We've got to do something to communicate.
Yeah.
To our citizens. A lot of them love the newsletter. Now they can't even get that. So not saying that's the key, but as long as it's in tier, tier two and it's still on our, our radar, I'm fine with that.
Because you're working on the, you're working on the newsletter.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and we're gonna be sending out an email to council people to sign up. So we have once or twice a month, we meet at different spots in the community to, with the community members. The council or mayor goes to whatever and meets. And we're gonna do daytime, evening, and weekend meetings. So the community has a chance to come to us as well.
I'm fine as long as it doesn't get buried.
I'm good.
I just have a question for city minister Bennett. Do you, if we want you to work on, um, the city hall, do you wish it were higher or can it switch with communication platform and still?
That's, well, I guess this, this one through five wasn't ranked. This was just, there, I, there was no rank to this. Obviously audits is everyone's top, but the rest of it, they were just numbers.
So do you want to amend your motion? We're here, Mr. Bennett. I amend my motion to, uh, move to approve the fiscal year twenty-two-five and twenty-two-six council goals with the change of moving communication platform to tier two and moving evaluate and decide on the future of city hall building to number five.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. All right, it passes all in favor to, for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Cascade Locks Council goals, move in city hall to number five and move in communication platform to tier two.
I will put together a cleaned up version with a nice little blurb about city hall and its status and its future for, uh, everybody to have in the next couple of weeks.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is it safe to say that this will be on our website as well? We, we normally put our council goals so citizens can know what we're focused on. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Approved treatment operations in-house or contract? Okay.
All right, so in a letter dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, Jacobs, our current wastewater treatment plant operators, informed the city they would not be renewing the contract that is set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This left the city with the choice of bringing the plant operations in-house or to put out an RFP to find new contracted operator. City staff met with Jacobs to develop a better understanding of day-to-day plant operations, processes, permit requirements, and costs. City staff reached out to neighboring cities to gauge their interest in running the Cascade Locks plant. None of them have the appetite for it. Staff researched job descriptions and expected salaries and built a draft job description for the city. Staff met with the city of Troutdale to discuss their operations and the benefits of bringing operations in-house. Staff did the best to cost out bringing the up process in-house. Uh, the numbers are estimated on the high side, and this is a rough estimate. Personnel cost salary on the high end would be eighty-eight thousand dollars plus seventy thousand dollars in total benefits. That's assuming a family plan with insurance, PERS, and all the, all, everything on the high end for a total of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, on the operation side, hauling was a lot more than I anticipated. We got a quote for hauling roughly fifteen thousand gallons of our, our waste, um, would be two-hundred-seventy-three thousand dollars total at thirty-five cents per gallon. I reached out to BKS Associates who do our water testing for a quote on all the tests required by DEQ, and they still haven't gotten back to me. So that total is unknown. Uh, and I can't provide a grand total without them providing a number. Uh, the cost of the final year of the contract with Jacobs is a hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Staff are not sure what the proposal of a new contract will be. However, we do not expect it to exceed two-hundred thousand dollars. And I may be completely wrong in that. I mean, the more I'm, the more I'm researching this, the more I think we're getting a pretty sweet deal from Jacobs or have been. Um, so, so I'm not sure. Uh, based solely off those rough numbers, it is clear that the best path forward for the city at this time is an RFP. However, staff does see the benefit of moving operations in-house, particularly having an additional person on the public work staff as our plant does not require a full-time staff member. At this time, staff recommends putting out an RFP for five years with the goal of working towards moving the position in-house at the end of the contract. Attached for review is a draft job description, RFP, scope of work, and the letter from Jacobs. Below is proposed timeline for the RFP and contract start. Um, staff will, uh, present their recommendation to council for approval on May 12th, uh, 2025 to select a contractor if we move forward with an RFP. Um, the RFP and scope of work have been reviewed by city staff, staff at Jacobs, staff at the city of Troutdale, and the city attorney. So council options are to move operations in-house or approve the RFP for distribution. I will note in the, uh, RFP that you got, there were some highlighted yellow items. I was waiting for numbers from Jacobs. Um, uh, I tried, decided to not reinvent the wheel and I took this RFP from Sweet Home and reworked it to fit our needs. Um, our capacity is not seven million gallons a day. It's point two million gallons a day. So it's point two. So it's a lot smaller.
I would say.
Yes. But they had not gotten back to me on that before I needed to get this out to council. Um, but I have a completed, clean version, ready to go.
So we have special, I'm looking to approve that treatment operations. Um, contract? RFP? RFP, RFP. What do we say about that? Repropose for proposal.
I second.
All right, any discussion, Tiffany? Okay. So how many hours does Jacob spend here?
Oh, I would say three to four hours a day.
Three to?
Yeah, they're about twenty to.
Three days.
Yeah, yeah.
Four hours per day.
Yeah, they're, they're about 20 hours a week, give or take, depending on what's going on. They were definitely here a lot more during construction, but on a normal week, about 20 hours, right, Mary Ann? Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
It's not that much.
No.
Okay, so is the anticipation, uh, if we hire somebody to do it in-house, that it would be split 20 hours at the facility, 20 hours for city?
Other public works duties, whatever that may be. Whether it's helping the, the crew with a water leak, uh, they could even plow snow in the winter if needed. So a, any other public work duties as needed.
So that would be a 50/50 split?
Probably, yeah. I, I would err on the side of caution, probably go more 75% related to treatment plant. But it, it's definitely not a full-time job.
No.
Yes.
That was, that was my question. And then, if I asked you this online, but I, I mean, isn't it the city's responsibility to maintain the weeds around the facility and not the contract?
I mean, we can, I mean, it is pretty, and I asked Jacob that same question. They said, that's pretty typical. They do it at all their other plants, that they do basic landscaping and maintenance of facilities.
Well, how much should we pay them? Do we pay them an hour? Do we pay them?
It's a flat rate. Yeah.
Do you know what that flat rate works out to hourly?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I will say, I don't think it was, I don't think it was this past year, it was the year before. Probably connected with the construction where the amount we haul was really excessive and they, they charged us an extra amount of money.
Okay, so that brings, sorry. Um, so we would haul it ourselves then if we were, do we haul it ourselves regardless?
No, we do not. So Jacob's staff gets a truck from the city of Hood River and takes it to the city of Hood River's plant.
And then we would do the same thing?
We would have to figure out where we would send it. We would have to probably enter.
Send it?
Yeah, because we don't have a truck. And we, we'd have to pay staff to drive somewhere, would figure out where to take it.
So did they like have a contract with Hood River?
I believe they do. Yeah. They, Jacobs also runs Hood River's plant. Yeah. But ours, ours does not, there is some plants where at the end of the process, you can take the solid waste and go distribute it out into a field. Ours is not to that standard per DEQ, so that is not an option.
Baker?
So when I look at this salary benefit, so to do it in-house plus the hauling of 273,000.
Correct.
Plus the unknown testing costs, it is super expensive.
Super expensive. Yeah.
And it is also my understanding that folks need to have a particular certification to do this.
Correct.
And I would presume that if we did an RFP, that the, that company, if we hired them, would be liable or responsible for failures in the system.
Uh, if it was their fault, like if it's, if their catat- catastrophic failure of the system, that's not related on like their lack of maintenance, then we're responsible. But like they mentioned, when they backed out, they're having issues with Oregon DEQ where they're, they're responsible for our testing. If they don't get the testing done in time, DEQ fines them or fines us, but they pay the fine.
So I am strongly in favor of the RFP.
There, there is definitely more liability if we move it in-house. That would be the, to me, that'd be the one drawback is, is a very large increase in liability.
You know? Bernard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a few questions or comments. Just to start off, uh, I, I too am supportive of going out for RFP. It's been my experience that for whatever reason wastewater treatment plant operations are commonly contracted out with providers like Jacob. When I worked for the city of Gresham, we considered in-housing our, our sewer services. And we actually had the city propose, make a proposal. We, we, we treated them just like a contractor. And they couldn't beat them. The contractor, uh, made a, a more competitive proposal than the city could. And I think that's partly because it is this very specialized skillset that, that, that goes into running these and understand the DEQ laws and all those, those specifics. Make it a, a kind of a specialized service. And you know, that takes, again, skills, knowledge, and, and experience that these guys have become very strong in, and that makes them competitive and making, putting together proposals. So if I could, I, I would agree with council member, uh, Prueitt that they shouldn't be doing landscaping. That is not a specialized skill we need our treatment operator doing. That very much should be done in, uh, by our staff, and I wouldn't want to spend money on those highly skilled people doing that type of work. And then what I asked for from the city administrator, when we do through this process, let me pull up my notes here. Um, I would like a, uh, kind of a comprehensive comparison on, on a metric that says, okay, you know, uh, the city of, take your guess, Stevenson, Ja-, you know, White Sam and Hood River, their, their contract says X, they're spending this dollars, this many dollars a year or a month on their services, and they're processing this much sewage. So if you could do like a per thousand gallons, there should be some metrics you can compare. For X dollars, you get this much sewage processed by an operations and maintenance, uh, uh, you know, contractor. And I would love to see that as a, 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 uh, uh, a kind of a, a contextual understanding on when we're looking at our proposals to say, are these guys within market? So that is one thing that, uh, I would hope our city administrator could help us when we're, when we're evaluating bids on this contract. Um, and then the next thing, I just want to ask a little more of the city administrator. So on the, in, in the, the, the RFP, it, there's a, a $4,000 maintenance budget. It says if there, if there a maintenance item comes $4,000 or less, then that's handled by Jacobs as we are now. Uh, but if it was above that, then the city would be involved. And I got the impression that it was Jacob recommending. I, I feel like this is ours to own, you know? If, if we, if we, if we moved it, say, $5,000, then we're taking all that, those maintenance projects off our potential plate when stuff emerges. Am I understanding that right for the city administrator?
Correct. They would do a cost estimate, and if the repair or maintenance was less than $4,000, they would do it. If it was.
That would be within their contract, right?
That was in their contract. They, they would, they would eat that cost. It was over $4,000, they would contact us for approval and we would pay for it.
Okay, well, I would like, before we send this RFP out, I would like a little more homework on that beyond talking to Jacobs. I'd like to talk, have staff talk to a couple of other providers and see it, what number they think makes sense, given, you, you, you can see the, the tension there. If we raise them, the, the amount a little more, then they might charge us a higher bid. Because look, we got to eat costs now up to 5,000. But on the flip side, if we raise it to 5,000, then we're protected for all these types of repairs that are under 5,000, which kind of makes us in the, as a winner. So I, I just want to make sure that's a good number in our proposal, that, that's a, I guess a market-based number. Um, and then the last thing is on capital. So it says, um, I don't have it right in front of me, but some of the effect that if it's maintenance and the city does it, if it's capital, I'm sorry, flip-flop. If it's maintenance, then the, uh, the contractor does it. If it's capital, the city completely owns it. To me, we should be very clear on how we're, we're distinguishing between what's a capital, uh, 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 cost versus a maintenance cost. And if it's not in our RFP somewhere, I didn't see it, I would like some specific language to, to very clearly define how we distinguish between those two. And I believe that was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more quick thing. I, I do want to point out, it's common for the wastewater treatment companies to do the landscaping. After listening to Rachel, and we all know, it's probably because they don't want to deal with whatever chemicals we're using or whatever debris gets left and blown. And I think, just let them do it so they can't say there's a failure or something. Well, it seemed like all the debris from when your folks did this got left and put in here. So I just, if that's part of it, let them do it would make sense to me if I was taking care of multi-thousand-dollar contract, I'd want to be taking care of a little bit of land around it too. And then, uh, I'm not sure what Councilman Seager is saying on cost per gallons of waste. I imagine there's a minimum, like if you have a small bucket you got to deal with or a slightly bigger bucket, you're going to pay the same amount instantly gets to the giant bucket. So I imagine there's some kind of minimum as well. So I don't know if that's in your research. Like, we don't do any of this wastewater treatment for let, for let them blow, and point two million gallons or point six million gallons is the same price. So that's all I'm going to point out, but I'm for the RFP.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Mary Ann?
Yeah, I did just one correction, um, on the first page, 1.1, very last sentence. You're a council administrator, former governor, not council manager.
Oh, yep.
But. And then are, would we say the RFP before it's sent out?
Um, well, like I said, I have the completed version here. I have not sent it out yet. Uh, but yes, I, if, if council wants to go ahead with the RFP, I will send it out before, I guess, does council want exact word-for-word review of it? I mean.
Not me. I just would like those things considered when you, you publish it, before you publish it.
Yeah. Did you have another question? We, concerning the maintenance, meaning the landscaping, we do have a burn fire. Well, I mean, we do have, do we drop yard debris off down there?
Yeah.
Still, so, I mean, I, I don't know why we can't maintain the grounds. And the only thing, other thing I would like to say is that I just hope that we would be hiring the best people qualified for the job, not people that check boxes off of lists. So.
Yeah. My, my concern, I don't know if it's a concern. Like I said, I, I didn't reinvent the wheel. I took Sweet Home's RFP. Their process from issuing the RFP to the time the new contractor started was 10 months. And we're trying to squeeze this down to three. I mean, yes, their plant is much bigger than ours, but this, this is, we're, we're, we're making it tight here to, to make this selection. Um, the folks at Troutdale, there's one of the folks at Troutdale has been great in helping us. Um, and in a pinch, will sign off as our level-two certified operator for a time being till we can get things. If we can't get this straightened out, but that's a very short-term, in-a-pinch solution. Um, so trying to get this done as soon as I can. We, as a city, have not done this since 1990, I think, from what I can find, is the last time we did this, so.
And I'm in support of an RFP, and I spoke with Sean from Jacobs, and he did say that he, they would, they're not going to just quit on us in June. If we needed them a little longer, they would. They prefer not to, but they wouldn't leave us in the lurch. Um, so all in favor of the RFP?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Everybody's aye. Any nays? Right, so the.
Madam Mayor, can I add one more comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I thought that was a short timeline as well. And I just, again, from my seat, I want to express to the staff that quality is met more important than timeliness. We need a high-quality process that gets us, you know, I always argue for the lowest responsible bidder, not the lowest bidder, the one who's responsible, who's proved, has a proven track record, but is also cost-effective. And if we need an extra month to get that done, I hope staff will take that and we, we negotiate with Jacobs or Troutdale, whoever, to give us that breathing room so we can do this properly. I just want to state that for the record.
All right, so adoption, the approved treatment operations for an RFP to go out has been approved. All in favor? We're, we're, we got it. I voted. Yeah, I know we voted, but I have to announce that it passed. Oh, okay. I thought you were asking. No, no. There was no nays. Thank you. Jordan, you just said about the 21 votes on that.
Yes, yeah.
I assume that all contracts do.
Yes, all contracts do.
All right, adoption of ordinance number 462 nuisance.
Okay, uh, over the last two years, the city of Cascade Locks has been working with consultants from the University of Oregon's Institute for policy research engagement to develop a strategic plan for the city and a revitalization plan for downtown Cascade Locks. Both planning projects included a community survey that asked residents and visitors what they liked most and least about Cascade Locks and where they would like to see the city invest effort. Consistently, survey respondents wanted the city to do more to address vacant and derelict buildings in downtown Cascade Locks. In both surveys, downtown redevelopment was the community's top priority. Downtown redevelopment was identified as the highest priority for the city for the next 10 years in the 2023 survey, whereas 71% of the 2024 respondents said that the redeveloping old buildings was the top, their top priority. 27% ranked vacant and unused buildings as the biggest problem downtown. The downtown revitalization plan steering committee has made recommendations to city council to address these concerns. A key recommendation is the strengthening of the city's nuisance code, which is the primary tool used by city staff to remove, reduce hazards to public safety and health. This ordinance states that no person shall cause or permit on property owned or controlled by human and by him or her a nuisance affecting public health. It enumerates 13 types of nuisances affecting public health, including debris, stagnant water, water pollution, odor, surface drainage, creating a hazard, attractive nuisances, snow and ice, fences along a sidewalk, uh, surface water, uh, drainage, trees, brush, grass, weeds, and junk. Proposed changes to, would include the addition of a definition of derelict structure within the ordinance and the addition of a derelict structure as one of the types of nuisances affecting public health. The insertions allow nuisance code to be used to address derelict structures in downtown and elsewhere in the city and strengthen the city's capacity to a a medley rate?
Yeah.
I don't, that's a fancy, uh, to help life and safety problems and negative economic impacts caused by derelict structures. Attached as an exhibit, uh, is ordinance number 462 with the addition of the definition of a derelict structure. Ordinance number 344, which would be repealed if ordinance 462 is adopted and a copy of chapter eight ordinances of the city charter. Staff recommends the adoption of ordinance 462 defining nuisances, providing for their abatement, providing penalties, and repealing ordinance 344. City staff were unable to get the ordinance out for council and. and public use seven days prior to council meeting. Therefore, it cannot be read in title only, but we need to be read in full. It can be, it can, well, now that, I guess, that second part doesn't count since there's only five of us here. So at this point, it would still take two readings for it to pass. Two meetings, two meetings, so... At this point, I can go ahead and read the ordinance in full.
Can you pause it? I have a citizen that wants to share on this one. Do we do it now or before he reads it?
We can do it now, yeah.
Brandon, would you like to come forward and state your name?
Brandon, and I was going to talk about something else about nuisance. And the code, now, is the administrator filled? You're the code enforcement?
Right now, yes.
Right now.
Till we get a position filled, yeah.
Okay, now, is parking involved with the nuisance?
Not nuisance, it's no. These are pretty specific to public health endangerment, really.
Okay, how about noise?
No.
No.
Not specific to this ordinance.
This or, okay, that's what, I wasn't sure if the noise or the parking was part of nuisance.
Not this one. It's in the broader scope of code enforcement, but not this one, relating to public health and safety.
I know you're talking about derelict buildings and stuff, but... Nothing, I know some people want to get rid of buildings downtown. There's a lot of buildings, not downtown, that need to be addressed. But the owners of these buildings, some of them don't want to sell or get rid of their buildings. And I know I had somebody come to my house upset. And I, we really need to be careful of how we treat people trying to get rid of their buildings and do something different because they were really hurt the way they were treated about their building, being kind of derelict. And I felt bad for them. They're older, but we need to figure out some way to help people with their buildings because there's a lot of them in town. But when you're a businessperson and you get older, you know, it's kind of hard on them to have a building that they've owned for years and people want them to get rid of it and sell it. And they might not be ready to sell it, even though we all know that they aren't looking nice. But there's got to be a way to help them a lot more than they are. But that's what I was going to talk about, noise and parking with the nuisance. Nuisance, that's what I was going to tell you.
Yeah.
Now, is that going to come up at all? Are you changing any of that? Because there are some changes that...
Eventually, down the road, it's all going to be reviewed. But this is just very specific to this one, one definition, really.
Okay, I didn't know if it's specific or just the whole nuisance.
Thank you, Brandon. So again, just so we can discuss that on... Do we, a motion? And a motion to adopt ordinance 462 concerning nuisances.
Right, second. But I said it, but...
Are we doing, are we doing a motion to read in full twice and hold a single vote? Is that what we're doing?
No, no, we can only read it once and then we have to vote on it the next time because we don't, one, we don't have the full council. Also, we have to be able to vote on it and approve it in order to have two readings in one night. So it has to be read in full if we want it discussed, if we want it...
Yeah, that's what I thought it meant here. We didn't full twice here and next time, no?
No, no.
Okay.
Once tonight, once in the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then next meeting, if we have all seven here, we can do it by title only.
Yes, if I get it out to public within the seven days, which I planned it now that I have it.
So we don't have to wait for all seven to read it?
Nope, we can do the first vote approving it tonight and then the second vote on the 14th to adopt it.
Okay.
Okay.
So number one is your motion. Will you just restate that so it's clear?
Okay, is, I'll make a motion to have the first reading of ordinance 462 concerning nuisances and with the second reading coming at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I second that. Do we need to say the word approving it or no? No, it's just a reading.
It's just a reading and a discussion, so...
Any discussion? Now, I think he probably has to read it.
Yeah, I got to read it first, yeah. I got, I got one, yeah. All right. Ordinance 462 and ordinance defining nuisances, providing for their abatement, providing penalties, and repealing ordinance number 344. Whereas the city council wishes to define nuisances and provide a process for efficient abatement of said nuisances, the City of Cascade Locks, Hidverver County, Oregon, ordains as follows. Section 1 definitions. Person, a natural person, firm, partnership, association, or corporation. Person in charge of property. An agent, occupant, leasing, contract purchaser, or other person having possession or control of property with the supervision of any construction project. Person responsible. The person responsible for abating a nuisance shall include: The owner, the person in charge of the property, as defined in subsection 2; The person who caused to come into or continue in existence a nuisance, as defined in this ordinance or other ordinances of this city; Public place, a building, a building, way, place, or accommodation, whether public or privately owned, open and available to the general public; Junk, includes all discarded motor vehicle parts, machinery, machinery parts, appliances or parts thereof, iron or other metal, glass, paper, timber, wood, or other waste or discarded material or material stockpiled for the purpose of recycling; Derelict structure, a building or structure that is unfit for human habitation or poses an incipient hazard or is detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare as a result of one or more of the following conditions: is unoccupied and unsecured, is partially constructed, is abandoned, structure or attractive nuisance, is a condition of deterioration, has an infestation of pests, has doors or windows boarded over, or other conditions that, in the opinion of the health officer, is detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Section 2, nuisances affecting public health. No person shall cause or permit on property owned or controlled by him a nuisance affecting public health the following nuisances affecting public health and may be abated as provided in the ordinance. One, debris, accumulation of debris, rubbish, manure, or other refuse that are not removed within a reasonable time that affect the health of the public. Two, stagnant water, stagnant water which affords a breeding place for mosquitoes and other insect pests. Three, water pollution, pollution of a body of water, well, spring, stream, or drainage ditch by sewage, industrial waste, or other substances placed in or near the water in a manner that will cause harmful material to pollute the water. Four, odor, premises which are in such of a state or condition as to cause an offensive odor or which are in an unsanitary condition. Five, surface drainage, drainage of liquid waste from private premises. Six, creating a hazard, no person shall create a hazard by A, maintaining or leaving in a place accessible to children, a container with a compartment and a door or lid which locks or fastens automatically when closed and which cannot be easily opened from the inside. Or B, being the owner or otherwise having possession of property upon which there is a well, cistern, cesspool, excavation, or other hole of a depth of four feet or more and a top width of 12 inches or more, fail or refuse to cover, refuse to cover or fence it over with suitable protective construction. Seven, attractive nuisances. A, no owner or person in charge of property shall permit thereon: One, unguarded machinery, equipment, or other devices which are attractive, dangerous, and accessible to children. Two, lumber, logs, or piling placed or stored in a manner so that as to be attractive, dangerous, and accessible to children. Three, an open pit, quarry, cistern, or other excavation without safeguards or barriers to prevent such places from being used by children. B, this section shall not apply to authorized construction projects with reasonable safeguards to prevent injury or death to playing children. Eight, snow and ice, no owner or person in charge of property, improved or unimproved, abating a public sidewalk, shall be responsible for snow removal when the snow has been placed on the sidewalk by a public agency. However, no owner or person in charge of property, improved or unimproved, abating a public sidewalk, shall permit: A, snow to remain on the sidewalk for a period longer than the first eight hours of daylight after the snow has fallen; B, ice to remain on the sidewalk for more than eight hours of daylight after the ice has formed unless the ice is covered with sand, ash, or other suitable material to assure safe travel. Nine, defective sidewalks. No owner of property, improved or unimproved, abiding a public sidewalk, shall permit: A, a sidewalk to deteriorate to such a condition that because of cracks, chipping, weeds, settling, covering by dirt, or other similar occurrences, the sidewalk becomes a hazard to person using it. B, the city shall not be liable to any person for losing or injuring to a, injury to a person or property suffered or sustained by reason of any accident on sidewalks caused by ice, snow, encumbrances, obstructions, cracks, chipping, weeds, settling, holes covered by dirt, or other similar conditions. Abutting a property, abutting property owner shall maintain sidewalk free from such conditions. Ten, fences along a sidewalk. A, no owner or person in charge of property shall construct or maintain a barbed wire fence thereon or permit barbed wire to remain as part of a fencing along a sidewalk except such wire may be placed above the top of a fencing not less than six feet, six inches high. No owner, B, no owner or person in charge of property shall construct, maintain, or operate an electric fence along a sidewalk or public way or along the adjoining property line of another person. Eleven, surface waters drainage. A, no owner or person in charge of a building or structure shall suffer or permit a rainwater, ice, or snow to fall from the building or structure onto a street or public sidewalk or to flow across the sidewalk. B, owner, the owner or person in charge of property shall install and maintain improper state of repair adequate drain pipes or drainage system so that any overflow water accumulating on the roof or about the building is not carried across or upon the sidewalk. Twelve, trees, brush, grass, weeds. A, the owner, person in possession, or the agent of the owner of any tract or parcel of land, improved or unapproved, shall on or after May 1 of each year keep, cut, and remove therefrom all dead brushes, dead trees, stumps, and other items likely to cause fire and to spread fire and shall cause the grass and vegetation to be cut to a height of no less than 10 inches at least once each year after May 1 and before July 15. B, brush, brushes, and limbs of all kinds shall be trimmed and cut back so they shall not project over the sidewalk or roadway area. Limbs may be allowed to project to, at an elevation of not less than nine feet above the level of the sidewalk and not less than 14 feet above the level of a roadway. Limbs, trees, and other growth shall not be allowed to interfere with city utility lines or to block the view of the street signs or traffic signs. C, nothing herein contained shall be considered to apply to brushes, bushes, trees, or other vegetation grown for food or fuel, providing that the health and safety of the public be, not be hereby endangered by the growth of such growth or vegetation. No owner or person in charge of property shall be allowed to stand a dead or decaying tree that is hazard to the public or to persons or property on or near the property. Thirteen, junk. A, no person shall keep any junk outdoors on any street, lot, or premises or any building that is not wholly or entirely closed except for doors used to ingress. And ingress and egress. B, this section shall not apply to junk kept in a duly licensed junkyard, automobile wrecking house. Fourteen, derelict structures. A, no person shall maintain the derelict structure that the city inspectors have identified as unsafe, constitutes a nuisance, is habitually in violation of city codes, or in such condition that the county health officer or building officials determine detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. Section 3, nuisances affecting public peace. One, radio and television interference. No person shall operate or use electrical, mechanical, other device, apparatus, instrumental, or machine that causes reasonable, preventable interference with radio or television reception by a radio or television receiver of good engineering design. B, this section does not apply to devices licensed, approved, and operated on the rules and regulations of the Federal Communications Commission. Section 4, unenumerated nuisances. One, declaration of nuisance, unenumerated nuisances. A, the acts, conditions, or objects specifically enumerated and defined in Section 2 and 3 are declared public nuisances, and such acts, conditions, or objects may be abated by any of the procedures set forth in Section 5 of this ordinance. B, in addition to the nuisances specifically enumerated within this ordinance, every other thing, substance, or act which is determined by the council to be injurious or detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of the city is declared a nuisance and may be abated as provided in this ordinance. Section 5, abatement procedure. One, notice. Upon determination by the city administrator or designee that a nuisance exists, the administrator or designee shall issue a warning citation to the owner or person in charge of the property. The warning citation shall be personally served or mailed by certified mail with a return receipt requested. B, such warning citations shall be, include the following information: One, a description of the real property by street address or otherwise on which such nuisance exists. Two, a description of the conditions compromising the nuisance. Three, a direction to abate the nuisance within 14 days from the date of warning citation. Four, a statement that unless the conditions compromising the nuisance are removed or corrected, the owner or person in charge will be cited into municipal court for the violation. C, 14 days after the issuance of the warning citation, the city administrator or designee shall inspect the premises to determine if the owner or person in charge of the property has abated the conditions compromising the nuisance. And if not abated, the city administrator or designee may issue a citation to the owner or person in charge of the property to appear in municipal court at the next available date. The citation shall be personally served or mailed by certified mail with a return receipt requested. D, in addition to the citation issued under this section, the city administrator or designee shall cause a notice to be posted on the premises or on the public right-of-way abutting the premises where the conditions exist, stating the condition compromising the nuisance and the date and time that the owner or person in charge is to appear in municipal court. Two, summary abatement. The procedure provided by this ordinance is not exclusive, but is in addition to procedure provided by other ordinances and the health officer, the chief of the fire department or chief of police may proceed summarily to abate a health or other nuisance which unmistakably exists and from which the imminent danger to human life or property. Three, abatement ordered by court. A, in addition to any fine imposed, the court may order the person to abate this nuisance within a specific time as determined reasonable by the court. B, if within the time specified by the court, the owner or person in charge of the property has not abated the nuisance, the court, upon application by the city, may order the city to abate the nuisance and charge the owner of the property the cost of abatement and, if necessary, place a lien against the property as provided in subsection 4 of subsection 5 of this ordinance. Four, assessment of the cost of city-ordered abatement. The city recorder or designee shall keep an accurate record of the expense incurred by the city in abating the nuisance and shall include therein a charge of 25% of the expense for administration overhead. The city, A, B, the city recorder by registered or certified mail, postage prepaid, shall forward the owner or person in charge of the property a notice stating: One, the total cost of abatement, including the administrative cost. Two, the cost, as indicated, will be assessed to and become a lien against the property unless paid within 30 days from the date of notice. Three, that if the owner or person in charge of the property objects to the cost of the abatement as indicated, he may file a notice of objection with the city recorder not more than 10 days from the date of the notice requesting a hearing. C, upon receipt of a request for hearing, the council shall set a date to consider objections. The objector shall be notified of such date. And at said hearing, the council shall hear the objection and determine the cost to be assessed. Hearing shall be held within 60 days of date, 60 days of date notice of objection is received. D, if the costs of the abatement are not paid within 30 days from the date of the notice and assessment of the cost as stated or as determined by council shall be made by resolution and shall thereupon be entered in the docket of city liens. And upon such entry being made, shall constitute a lien upon the property from which the nuisance is removed or abated. E, the lien shall be enforced in the same manner as liens for street improvements are enforced and shall bear interest at the rate of 9% per annum. Such interest shall commence to run from date of the entry of the lien in the lien docket. An heir in the name of the owner or person in charge of property shall void the assessment nor will a failure to receive the notice of proposed assessment render the assessment void, but it shall remain a valid lien against property. G, the city may, for purposes of giving notice under this section, rely upon the most current records of the county recorder and county assessor for the purpose of identifying the name and address of the property owner unless the city has actual notice that the property is owned by others. Subsection six penalties, any person who shall be found guilty of a violation of any of the provisions of this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine not exceeding five hundred dollars. Separate violations, each day's violation of a provision of this ordinance constitutes a separate offense for which a separate penalty may be imposed. Two, the abatement of a nuisance is not a penalty for violating this ordinance, but an additional remedy. The imposition of a penalty does not relieve a person of the duty to abate the nuisance. However, the abatement of a nuisance within fourteen days of the date of notice to abate will relieve the person responsible from the imposition of any fine under section five of this ordinance. Section seven, repeal of prior ordinances, city of cascade locks, ordinance three, four, four, and amendments there are hereby repealed. Saving clause, ordinance repealed shall remain in force for the purpose of authorizing the arrest, persecution, conviction, and punishment of a person who violated those ordinances prior to the effective date of the ordinance. Section eight, severa- severability. Should any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance be declared invalid, such a declaration shall not affect the validity of any other section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase. If this ordinance or any portion thereof should be held to be invalid on one ground but valid on another, it shall be constructed that the valid ground is at the one upon which said ordinance or such portion thereof was enacted. Section nine, effective date, this ordinance shall become effective upon adoption of city council and approval by the mayor.
I just noticed effective data, it will need to be changed to say thirty days. In section eight, it said it shall be construed, not constructed. I know you're at, you were at the end of it, but. Just so everybody knows, it's ameliorate. It's to make something bad or unsatisfactory better. The only question I section, page three, section two, uh, we're fourteen A, where it says, uh, no person shall maintain a derelict structure that city inspectors have identified as unsafe. I, I, I really think we need to identify what city inspectors are. Because over on five, on five one, the next page over, it said by the city administrator. So, uh, who is going to make this determination about a derelict structure? Who, I think it needs to be defined.
Yep.
So, um. That was, that was the only thing that I, that I saw. Who do you go to? Who, who is the person? Who is our inspector basically? Is it our inspector or is it?
Correct, so what I would suggest is so if you go to five, two, summary abatement, where, I mean, health officer, chief of police, chief of fire, essentially have their own powers to do their own things. Is I, I am never personally going to go condemn a building. I don't have that qualification, I don't have that skill. I would always go back to the, my specialists, which would be building officials, public health officers, chief of police, I mean. Unless the building's literally falling over, I'm watching it fall over. I can't stop it from falling in, so yeah. Uh, correct, yep. At the top of page five.
County.
It's a county, to me, it's a county building inspector.
Yep.
So it should stay, because we don't have city. I think we should say some county, I think it should say county there.
County building inspectors have identified as unsafe. I mean, they're the ones that basically.
Hold on, you guys got it?
No, no, that's what I want to go ahead.
And, and then what would be, are, what's that process? We put that in there, we say it's a county inspector, so does that mean they're going to get a call from you saying, hey, come check out this building, we're having, you know, it's not really.
Pretty much, yeah, myself or the code enforcement officer would ask for them to inspect it. Yeah, or the fire chief, yep. Probably, probably.
Was that, was that your question Denise?
Yeah.
Okay, you done? You done there, yeah?
Yeah, so, so we can, we can, we can add a definition of inspector and put out that, added in there as to what an inspector is, county public health officer, building inspector, chief of police, or I guess sheriff, or chief, um, fire chief, depending upon the specific nuisance being reviewed. Something to that, I, I can have, um, Ruben write something up.
Pardon me, so then should we take out the word city on page three, fourteen A? And just say building inspectors and then we can find it?
And just, you know, just inspectors.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to narrow it down to building because we're, building is literally just building. I want, there's other, other nuisances involved.
Madam Mayor, I have a suggestion on this.
Yes, Bernard?
So, one way to do this would be to say city inspectors as designated by the city administrator, and then you cover all these scenarios. He's going to assess the situation and then say, this is a fire issue, this is a building issue, this is a whatever issue. Then that person who knows about those issues will then conduct the inspection and then make a, a ruling. How's that sound?
I like that, yeah.
Yep. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, repeat that one more time.
Where it says city inspectors, you say city inspectors, comma, as designated by the city administrator.
Any other discussion?
Correct, yeah, yeah, if, if you're all good with that.
Yep. Do we do, do we do or don't vote on it? And then the next reading will be on April fourteen. Moving onward. Adoption of ordinance number four, six, four, outdoor vendors. And do your reading in the night.
Yeah. Yeah, this one's not nearly as long, so yeah. I mean, it's not great, but it's not as long. Uh, so this one's a little bit trickier, um, I'll just read my, my synopsis here. As a portion of the Cascade Locks Downtown Revitalization Project was a review and update of ordinances pertaining to downtown zone business restrictions and general economic development. A review of ordinances found that the city of Cascade Locks had several conflicting standards related to temporary business uses. The Downtown Revitalization Committee, U of O staff and city staff recommend, recommend the ordinances three, seven, eight, and four fifty be repealed and replaced with ordinance four, six, four, consolidating both ordinances and expanded to specifically address mobile food carts. The proposed ordinance clarifies that an annual permit for the city of Cascade Locks is required for all temporary outdoor businesses. Obtaining this permit will require proof of property owner approval, current licenses, and or certifications from Hood River County Health Department and proper citing meeting all fire, building, and utility code requirements. The proposed ordinances also include a separate definition of mobile food carts and restricts mobile food carts, which are a subset of temporary outdoor businesses to downtown, commercial, public, and light industrial zones. Attached to review is proposed ordinance four, six, four, ordinance three, seven, eight, ordinance four, five, zero, and a copy of chapter eight of the city ordinances. Staff recommend approving and adopting ordinance four, six, four. Um, and again, we don't have all seven, and I did not get it out within the seven days, so it'll need to be read in full. Ordinance four, six, four, and ordinance of the city of Cascade Locks establishing regulations for the conduct of commercial activities outside of building, repealing ordinance three, seven, eight, and four, five, zero. Whereas the city of Cascade Locks finds that, that temporary outdoor businesses such as mobile food carts and seasonal vendors can help create a visually attractive, vibrant streetscape and promote overall commerce when properly regulated. And whereas there are two ordinances that provide regulation and citing standards for temporary outdoor businesses with many overlaps. And whereas neither ordinance number three, seven, eight, nor ordinance four, five, zero contain an adequate permit process that allow, that would allow for the city of Cascade Locks to ensure that the citing standards are met. And whereas consolidating these two ordinances into one ordinance that allow for and regulates temporary outdoor businesses, including street vendors and mobile food units, is in the best interest of the city of Cascade Locks. The city of Cascade Locks, Hood River County, Oregon, ordains as follows, section one, purpose and scope. A, this chapter provides reasonable, necessary regulations for the nature and conduct of temporary outdoor commercial activities in order to, one, protect the public health and safety. Two, maintain the free flow of pedestrian vehicle traffic on streets and sidewalks and areas open to the public. Three, prevent interference with the peaceful enjoyment of the areas near places where the transient vending activity or special event is occurring. Four, preserve, protect, and enhance the economic, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values and objectives of the city. And five, create the visually attractive streetscape and promote overall commerce. B, the regulations of this ordinance are not intended to permit any violation of the provision of any other or, or regulation. C, the regulation shall not apply to garage sales, yard sales, rummage sales, or swap meets conducted on private property provided that the sale is not conducted over a period in excess of four consecutive days or more often than three times per calendar year. These regulations shall not apply to sales conducted by municipal, by municipal government, religious, charitable, or educational or similar organizations provided that the sale is conducted on premises owned or leased by the applicant for regular conduct of its business or affairs. These regulations shall not apply to, eh, E, these regulations shall not apply to temporary or seasonal uses within the permanent structures except for those activities within permanent structures subject to regulations as a special event. F, exemption of a use from the provision, this ordinance shall not exempt the use from other applicable provisions of the ordinance. G, these regulations do not preclude any government agency from adopting or enforcing additional use and operation standards for temporary uses on public property. Section two definitions, one, dance includes a dance which an open, which is open to the public or for which admission is charged directly or indirectly. Two, mobile food unit, a vehicle that is propelled or can be pulled or pushed down a sidewalk, street, or highway on which food is prepared, processed, or converted or used in, or is used in selling and dispensing food to the customer. Three, person includes the singular and plural and any individual, firm, corporation, association, club, co-partnership, or society, or any other organization for special event. An activity which is likely to attract any one, at any one time, an assembly of persons conducted for a special, specified period at one or more locations within the city under the auspices of and subject to supervision and de- direction of a single person, including but not limited to festivals, fairs, shows, sales, sidewalk sales, exhibitions, auctions, city or regu- regional celebrations, athletic events, and public dances. Five, temporary outdoor business, business, business. Any activity involving the sale or offering for sale of any good or service at a location outside a building without the creation of a permanent structure. Six, transient merchant, any person who offers food, beverages, produce, merchandise, a service, or anything of value for sale within the city for temporary shelters, from temporary shelters, stands, vehicles, or carts on a temporary or seasonal basis. This definition includes permanent merchants conducting temporary outdoor business activities outside the building housing the primary business also known as street vendors. Section three, regulations, the following regulations shall apply to all temporary outdoor businesses. A, the chief of police or county sheriff shall have discretion to set general policy for security for special events and to determine the specific security requirements for an individual sp- special event. B, the fire marshal shall have discretion to set general policy for the fire safety inspections and to require a fire safety inspection for any individual transit, transient merchant or special event and to charge a fee to be set by council resolution. C, the building official shall have discretion to require a structural inspection for any temporary structure and to charge a fee to be set by council resolution. D, no person shall be deemed to be exempt from the application of this chapter by reason of that person having conducted business within the city prior to the effective date of this chapter. E, transient merchants must comply with all applicable state and local laws, including but not limited to regulations and standards imposed or enforced by the county sanitarian and building official in the municipal code. F, all provisions of the development code relative to signage must be followed. G, all waste shall be disposed of in compliance with all city counting state standards. It may not be dropped, spilled, or poured into storm sewers or onto the ground. Adequate trash receptacles must be provided and must be emptied appropriately. H, no use will be permitted, one, within the required, required landscape or setback area of a property. Two, which blocks vision at street intersections, which blocks a crosswalk or otherwise impedes the flow of pedestrian traffic, including a sixty-inch clear walkway required by Americans with Disabilities Act being forty, forty-two USC one, two, one, zero, one, or on other private or public property. Three, which blocks entrances or exits from buildings. Four, which blocks a driveway or otherwise impedes the flow of vehi- vehicular traffic. Five, within ten feet of any disabled parking space or access ramp. Six, within fifty feet of any entrance or driveway to a healthcare facility with an emergency or urgent care facility, school, or police or fire station. Seven, within any service drive of a parking lot. Or eight, in a location which conflicts with any fire or safety code reg- regulations. I, no temporary outdoor business may emit noise, smoke, steam, or light that disrupts the operation of any nearby business, which disrupts the normal availability of any neighbor dwelling, or which disrupts the ability of a reasonable person to utilize and enjoy a public space. J, no person shall operate as a transient merchant without first obtaining a permit from the city of Cascade Locks. K, mobile, mobile food units may only be located on private properties in the downtown, commercial, light industrial, or public districts. Section four, permit, all transit merchants are required to obtain a permit annually from the city of Cascade Locks. A, application for a permit shall be on forms provided by the city and shall include the following information. One, official picture identification in the form of valid driver's license, state-issued identification card, or valid passport. Two, current contact information, including a valid mailing address and phone number. Three, current licenses for food service and or mobile food units as required by the Oregon Health Authority and or Hood River County Health Department for the location of vending. Five, type of vending, if vending on private property, the transit merchant must provide a copy of the affected property owner's written permission for placement on a temporary shelter, stand, vehicle, vehicle, or cart. And six, any other information deemed necessary to enforce this chapter. B, a copy of the approval permit shall be prominently displayed at the transient sales site. Section five, inspections. A, the conditions applicable to a temporary outdoor business include the right of the city or the county sanitarian to inspect the transient merchant's business premises to ensure compliance with applicable structural, mechanical, fire, health, or safety regulations or concerns. B, if the transient merchant fails within a reasonable time to remedy any non-compliant practice or defective condition identified as a result of any inspection, the temporary vendor business may be closed by the city. Section six, appeal. Any person whose temporary outdoor business has been closed may appeal the decision to the city council, provided however that no business shall be conducted during the pend- pendency of the appeal, the fee for an appeal shall be set by council resolution. Section seven, removal of structures. A, any structures, carts, vending units, tents, tables, or other apparatuses used, no, I read that wrong, apper- appertencences used by transit merchants shall be removed from the property promptly upon expiration time limits of the operation or business activity or special event wherever, whichever comes earlier. B, any temporary shelter, stand, vehicle, cart, or sign in violation of this chapter may be removed by the city administrator or designee twenty-four hours within notice is delivered to the vendor in person or five days after written notice is mailed to the address registered within the city. One, any items removed may be stored by the city up to thirty days or until the owner redeems the property by paying a storage and removal charge as established by city administrator. The city may dispose of items left longer than thirty days from the date or notice provided in this section. Two, written notice shall be include at least the following. A, a statement that the items are in violation of this. A, a statement that the items are in violation of this chapter. B, the approximate location of the violation. C, the date the items will be removed. D, statement that the removal and storage costs are responsible of the owner or vendor. C, statement that the items shall be disposed of after thirty days of storage. F, cost of removal and storage. G, location of storage or person to contact concerning storage. H, statement that the owner or vendor may remove the items at their own expense prior to the date of removal. And I, statement that further violation will result in immediate removal without prior notification. Section eight, hold harmless and indemnification. Any such persons shall indemnify and hold the city and its officers, agents, and employees harmless from and against all claims for injury, loss, or damage arising out or out of or in any way related to the operations of transit merchants' business. Section nine, penalty. Violation of any provision of this chapter is a class A infraction, shall be punished by a fine of not less than fifty dollars and not more than five hundred. Each day's violation of a previous provision of this chapter constitutes a separate violation for which a separate penalty will may be imposed. Upon any violation, the city administrator or designated of the city administrator may order the transient merchant activity to cease. And upon receipt, receipt, receipt of written notice, the activity shall immediately cease. Section ten, effective date, the ordinance shall become effective thirty days after the adoption by city council and approval by the mayor.
That's on page one, that uh, section one, that sentence was and why they're and is that, is that accurate? The regulations of this ordinance are not intended to permit any violations of the provision of any other or regulation?
I caught that when I was reading too, which one was it?
Section one, B, there on page one, at the end of it. The regulations of this ordinance are not intended to permit any violations of the provision of any other or regulation. Maybe or isn't supposed to be there? Any other? Maybe, maybe or is not supposed to be there?
I feel like there should be something after the or.
Maybe it's ordinance.
That's what I was thinking was ordinance. I'll double check with Ruben on that.
So then I have other questions. Which I said to you. Uh, should it say on section three, B? Should it say fire chief instead of fire marshal?
You know, I meant to ask Chief Logan this. No, because he doesn't have any of the certifications to do inspections.
So we would call the marshal.
We would call, yeah, Regional State Fire Marshal's office.
The other two, the second three, E, and five, A, county sanitarian, do we have such a name?
Um, you know, I actually tried to Google and figure out what that was, and the best I could find out is it had to do with like sewage flow. But I could not find a good definition, and I'm not, not sure if that's old language from the previous ordinances. Like I, I literally could not find a definition of what a sanitarium is anywhere.
We don't have such a thing.
Yeah.
To put the rank up and maybe county inspector.
I, I would, yeah, but I'll double check with Ruben on that again.
And there were some things in four, fifty that I liked that didn't make it over. You know, for this being a small package, it sure wasn't any of us reading, I'm just gonna say. Um, on page three of, of the ordinance four, fifteen. Uh, page three, section two. Or section two, registration, and then four, number four. All temporary food vendors cooking with propane shall obtain a portable propane cooking devices permit from the Cascade Locks Fire EMS Office. I, I haven't seen the application, so I don't know if there's something on the application that signifies that they are using propane to anything I, so.
I don't know if the application says, or we always, we have a packet together and we give them that.
Yeah.
That permit also application for the propane, propane, but I'm not sure if that permit application.
So, but if, if we, if we adopt this new or this new ordinance, this, uh, four, sixty-four, then that would just, that was it didn't transcribe, but we're into this new ordinance. So I wonder if we want that to be left in or we, we put re-entered back into the new ordinance. Just a point of discussion. And then I went right through, then I saw the thing about the, uh, the loud noises. I would assume that includes drawing attention to yourself.
Yep.
And stuff your product.
Yep.
Uh, on page three of the older ordinance, sorry.
Which, which one?
Of ordinance, uh, four, fifteen. Uh, section three, F, which would be on page five. Sell from any location other than the registered location. Do we want them to be able to just move around town wherever they want? Or are we, are we registering them to specifically a spot?
A spot.
That I do not think is covered in the ordinance.
Well, I mean, it, it does lay out that their application or their permit will list a specific address. And they have to display that permit. So if the permit does not match the address, then they're in violation. Like I guess, I guess it's not specis- like that exact sentence not in there, it's kind of implied.
Somebody who's gonna outline, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's unnecessarily added verbiage, but I just liked that it wasn't the old one. And it was very succinct and poignant that you, this is where you're gonna stay. Because we do have, we do have different events and well, they might wanna move around to just sort of for some, uh, better position, I, I don't know. And then the other one I had, did you have a question concerning that? The section three, G, solicit or conduct business with any person in a motor vehicle. Okay. Yeah, but when you were reading through this, I motor vehicles is just the thing that they can move around with, is, if it could be a movable truck like this down at the hotel. But for some reason I had it in my head, and I'm sorry, people like how they think very narrowly. When I see motor vehicles, I mean like a car, we don't want people selling like food from a
Yeah, and that'd be where they'd have to have a permit from the health department. Yeah.
Page four, five. Make it number four. After current licenses for food service and mobile food units as required by Oregon Health Authority or Hood River County Department, so four becomes current permits for propane as Tiffany can read that again. So then four, five, six on this list become five, six, seven. So that we add the under, before becomes current permit.
All temporary food vendor cooking with propane shall obtain affordable propane cooking devices permit from the Cascade Locks Fire EMS. It's, it's point four on, uh, ordinance four, fifteen.
So it's current square ball, propane cooking permit. If propane is used for cooking from the
Yeah, something to that.
As with propane permit. From, I, I don't have it.
I know, it's four, it's on page of the, the second, the four, fifty, ordinance four, fifteen, page three, point four. All temporary vendor, food vendors cooking with propane shall obtain affordable propane cooking devices permit or cooking permit or something from the Cascade Locks Fire EMS Office.
Can you see that Jordan to, to make it in there?
Yeah.
So with that front amendment, that we, we make that four, then
Then push everything.
Yeah, push everything down. That's the one, too, I thought was a good idea.
And, and maybe it's onerous, I mean, maybe fire chief doesn't wanna do it, I don't know, but I, I just think that's a, a good thing to have in there. So we don't want, you know, I mean, propane is a pretty significant explosive, if not. Not that anybody
Yep.
Did you have any, any insight to?
Okay. On page three of four, sixty-four, uh, C, the building official. Is that the county building?
Yes. Yeah.
How do we need to put county building official? Or something, because we don't have a building official. That's page three, number C, first, that's a very good name.
Oh, yeah.
The building official.
That's good.
I think it needs to be the county building department or whatever you wanna do. And then I don't know how important this is, that's up to you guys, but on both of the other ordinances, the very last section, you have separability. And that is in, in, not in the new ordinance. And separability explains, uh, so any section, subsection, paragraph, clause, or phrase be declared invalid. It doesn't affect the valid event. Yeah, the, the whole thing. And I didn't see that in this new one, it is in both of the old ones.
And, and the other one I just read.
That's important to, uh.
Yeah, we can add it in, yeah. No, I, I mean, again, this is up to you all, but this is a pretty specific where they're talking about the structure itself being inspected.
Right, so you don't want to, to use the language specified by the city.
Yeah, that's the only reason we change if we brought, uh, building process in-house, but not, not gonna happen anytime soon.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll talk to Ruben on that one.
Other one I have is, so is this just, um, page one of five? Section one, C. So does that mean that I can, I can't have four garage sales a year at my house?
That shall not apply to garage sales.
But it's, I know, uh, shall not apply to garage sales, yard sales, where we sell or swap meets conducted on private property, provided that the sale is not conducted over a period in excess of four consecutive days or more than three times per calendar year. So that means I can't have four a year. I can only have three.
Correct.
Unless we wanted up that number.
I think I think our citizens I think the number should be up to not a limit. I mean, I can see where they can't have it for more than four consecutive days. But they shouldn't be limited on their private property how often they can have one.
But at the same time, you don't wanna live next door to somebody who has a perpetual yard sale.
Yeah.
For forever, so I mean, it should
Yeah, they can't, because they can't have it more than four consecutive days.
Yeah, but they could go through, they could, they could have it four days, take a day off.
Yeah, I think you can sell it next to somebody who had one every weekend. Was a business. So I, I like limiting it, but I am open to what this body thinks is a good.
I think we should go up more than three. Only because you only have certain amount of time in Cascade Locks to have it, so even if you have one a month, even if we put it up to five, would be better than three. I don't think anybody even does it, but I think as a homeowner, if I wanted to, if the citizens wanted to, I'd hate for them to get in trouble because they wanted to have four. And still, we're making rules.
I'm not gonna count yard sales.
Okay, two, we're good, but five, Bernard?
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor. So, just a couple of things. One, I agree separability needs to be in there. Two, and I apologize, because I do try to get all my questions in, but I did, I, I thought of another question as I was pondering this, this proposed ordinance. I would like to ask from the recorder. How, i- in your, in your estimate, does this address a lot of challenges you, you've seen with outdoor permits, with the different things that you've experienced uh, since you've been doing this work? Because I know that, again, you're on the front line. And I just, I would hate to think that we're adopting something that you're, you're you're thinking, boy, that's gonna not end well. Is, is there something you might take issue with in what we've put together here? Let me ask that real quick.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask. To be truthfully honest, I did not, I have not had the time to look at this and three, seventy-eight and four, fifty. I will tell you, uh, as far as the, um, temporary vendors. We, I, I really haven't had much issue with them now that we changed our uh, regulations to three hundred and sixty-five days. Before it was, you know, they wanted to open early, they wanted to open late, none of them, uh, well, one of them does not abide by the signing thing. I, I don't think we've had a real issue yet because we only have two. The one thing that I'm concerned about that I didn't get a look at is three, seventy-eight deals with our two businesses currently that have tents. And those tents, tent spaces have been allowed for a hundred and eighty days. And and I don't know, and that, though, they have not been an issue either at all. You know, they have, they have, they know, they apply for their, their temporary permit, and it's not a big deal. I don't know, I'm questioning, does this four, sixty-four, because does this take care of our tent people, our businesses with tents? I don't really answer your question, but I haven't had a chance to look at this to see how does this change things business-wise for us? I don't know what effects there will be when you get many street vendors.
Okay. So, I, I guess, I, I've got two more things if I may, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we gotta move on though, because we got a long ways to go.
Okay, so my other two things were, and I asked the city administrator this, but it does look like there is a a, uh, it's a requirement that we pass a resolution that sets a fee for processing these permits. It, did not, did, did I not hear you say that in tonight's reading?
Yes. You did hear me.
Okay, and then the last thing. So, maybe the recorder can clarify this, but I didn't see a, a, a time limit for an outdoor business permit. And, you know, the city administrator said, yes, we, to allow them year-round. So, but is it, are there two different, uh, you know, documents that regulate the permit process? Am I under, one, they do, you, your thing lasts for a year, and then if you wanna continue doing that, that, that vendor work, you have to reapply, is that still the case? This doesn't change that, is that right?
What we changed in the community development code was they're allowed three hundred
Sixty.
Sixty-four. Yeah, it's just less than a year that they have to reapply for their street vendor license.
Okay, so, so that, this doesn't affect that? That still is in, 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 in place in the, in the regulation of their, of their work?
Yes, unless that changes in the code.
Okay.
Okay, just need, so that's in the code, because it was in, uh, it was in ordinance three, seventy-eight that, uh, defines class A. Class one was a transient merchant, it may operate a temporary outdoor business for a period not to exceed a hundred and eighty aggregate days in any three hundred and sixty-five day period. And then class two was ninety days.
Right.
Um, so we did, we did change it in the code, so it doesn't need to be addressed in the ordinance, is that, well, is that my understanding?
I guess, I, I guess what my question is, since we're taking off three, seventy-eight, that's what we used for the tents, for the businesses. So, I have not looked at this all together, I didn't put it together, I wasn't involved in it. Um, I don't know if now our tent businesses, our tents are covered in four sixty-four, I really don't know. So then.
Because, because like I said.
Well, it's outdoor business activity.
Class two says that transient merchant not requiring direct connection. Uh, a permit for a class two transient for ninety days, uh, aggregate ninety days in any three hundred and sixty-five day period.
Yeah, but if you're taking away three seventy-eight, and now you're replacing it with four sixty-four.
I know, it's not in here, so.
Well, but what four sixty-four says is outs, outdoor business activity. It covers outdoor business activity. Okay, so I mean, I, I was just, like I said, I haven't looked at it enough to, to say that.
Yeah. Six, six.
Yeah, definition.
All of it was recommended in the downtown republikation committee. Because at one point, you're gonna find a cart that looks like a tent and a tent that looks like a food cart, or it's a little bit of both. So putting it all in one was recommended.
Yeah, definite definitions five and six.
Yeah.
But does it give the days, the limits?
No, well, it would be the same as, well, assuming it's the same as in the community development code, which is.
The days are not limited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It ju, yeah, just says.
Why we don't put it in here. Yes, you've got it in the code, but this would sure eliminate, oh, I need to look at the code now.
Yeah, another document, yeah.
Well, I mean, it, under section four permit, it states must obtain a permit annually. So I'd assume, one year from the day your permit was issued, you have to go get another one.
At the time the code was written, I remembered we wanted to do the three sixty-four days, because they had to reapply for any new changes to our code. So that gives us a day to say, oh, by the way, now, so the separation of the code from this ordinance, I think, was purposefully done, so that when they reapply, they are bound by this new year's, any changes we made to that code.
Correct, okay. Bernard?
Okay, last thing I just want to say, look, I value the experience of our recorder, who's dealt with these different situations over many years. And I don't know if it's possible, but again, I would like to give her some time to review the three ordinances, the new one, and make sure everything sinks properly, and all the different issues are, are addressed. If that results in, in changing our ordinance here and there, I would welcome that as council member, that we do this, you know, in a, in a more, uh, uh, thorough manner. I don't know if the other council supports that, but I very much advocate for that.
Want to amend your motion?
What's my, uh, we had our first reading. I just moved to have our first.
First reading.
By the second meeting, she can, she can.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, approve IGA with Scamania County EMS and Rescue.
This should be an easy one, with a lot less reading.
I have five pages.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, the city of Cascade Locks Fire and EMS has a mutual aid intergovernmental agreement with Scamania EMS and Rescue District. Scamania has been a great partner for the city and provided excellent coverage for the city prior to Chief Logan's arrival, when the city's department was lacking sufficient staffing. As you are all aware, Chief Logan has done a fantastic job improving the performance of the city's Fire and EMS department, and we have returned the favor to Scamania County several times. Scamania County EMS and Rescue has initiated renewal of the contract. City staff recommended renewing, recommend renewing the contract. City Attorney Cleveland has reviewed the agreement. Attached for review are a letter from Scamania EMS and the proposed agreement and current agreement. Um, and if you actually read them, they are literally word for word the same agreement. The only difference is, there's been a lot of staff turnover here and at Scamania. Scamania wanted all of the new names and contact information in the agreement, but it's the exact same agreement. Yes, yeah, you mentioned the address. Um, and, um, Counselor Seager, you would ask some questions about insurance, and I did not get a chance to follow up on those yet. I will reach out to CIS.
Go to put the mutual aid, intergovernmental agreement with Scamania EMS and Rescue.
Any discussion? Just make sure that that address gets changed on stage four.
Correct.
Because we don't get any mail.
Yep, yep, um, and there are two, for the, for the mayor to sign, there are two originals, one for us, one for them.
All right, Bernard?
Again, I apologize. Do you have a sense on, in a given year, how many calls we end up taking in Scamania and vice versa? Do we have any sense of that?
Yeah, for some reason twenty is sticking in my head, but that seems pretty high. Um, it's not a.
That we go to Scamania or vice versa?
That we go there. We go there more, there more often than they come here.
Oh, wow.
And it used to be the complete other way around.
Okay.
To the point where we got, we're getting bills from Scamania, because we use them so often. Um, but I can follow up with Chief Logan.
Again, it doesn't change my vote, but I am curious, I was curious, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. All right, approve the IGA with Scamania EMS and Rescue has passed. All yea and nays. Reports and presentations, committee reports?
No committee reports.
City Administrator Bennett reporting.
I don't have a super long one. Um, first one, McCord Creek, um, project lobbying, our lobbyist Trey Hendricks has, uh, hit the ground running. No major updates at this point. He has met with Senators Bonham, um, and Meek of our neighboring district that covers uh, Happy Valley and Gladstone. He has also dug through paperwork relating to the project, past and present. Um, I will ask Mr. Hendricks to give an update at the April fourteenth council meeting, should have a lot more information by then. Um, he did work with Senator Meek, um, to get, um, our issue specifically mentioned in a bill. That didn't really release, didn't really name Cascade Locks, but that ODOT would forgive a loan relating to a project, to our project. Um, but it, it's in the works, it's all fluid at this moment. We're not sure if that is, or going after the Christmas tree bill is the best option. Um, by the fourteenth, we should have a lot better idea of, of where this is going. Um, Historic Columbia River Highway Advisory Committee, I did give an update to them on March twentieth about what's going on uh, along Wanapaw, what we're doing. Um, good group, they meet once a quarter. Uh, it's very high level county, uh, um, representatives and state representatives are there. Uh, myself, um, and Amanda was virtually on, I gave about a ten-minute presentation going over the development, or the revitalization plan, as well as the upcoming TSP, um, and the port gave a few updates as well. So, I mean, good, good group to work with, keep, keep them abreast of what's going on, but no major updates. Um, that same day, on the twentieth, I did go down to Salem, I met with Senator Lieber. She is the senate side co-chair of the Joint Ways and Means Committee. They are like the committee that controls a lot of the general fund dollars for the state, so it's good to be on their side. Um, learned a lot from her in the process. Um, of course, we're one of, sorry, I heard a car alarm, we're one of hundreds of requests that have turned in. I don't know how accurate it is, she said our construction request at two hundred and twenty-five thousand is the smallest that she's seen. I don't know, I, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But I am gonna go back, follow up. I have another meeting with a, a represent, Representative Sanchez, who is the other co-chair in April. I have been reaching out to some of the construction co-chairs, subcommittee co-chairs as well, to try and get this going. I don't know how effective this is gonna be this time around, especially with just me going at it. Um, if this is a kind of one-stop shop, big building, us, the port, food bank, library, post office, that would probably require more of a group effort um, to go at, but at least, at this point, I'm meeting the people, I'm learning the process, so, making some headway. Um, and in addition to your report was the breakout of the cost of the bathrooms, uh, which was more than I thought it would be. Um, so, grand total that we've spent on just daily maintenance in one time, or infrequent repairs and maintenance is eighty thousand dollars in the last five years. And our showers have made twenty-four hundred dollars, so we are definitely not making money. Um, I don't know how much weight you want to put into the intangibles this provides the community and local businesses, but, I mean, that, those are the quite almost hard numbers. It's, it's kind of a guess on some of it, but it's not a moneymaker. And this, this, the future of this was on our parking lot list, so it's definitely like a tier four item, but I, I don't know what the future is. Yeah.
I just, uh, I just want to say, um, you wanted emails that you sent out about, uh, the, uh, our lobbyist, you said you did a tour. Um, would it be possible for you to, uh, just send the hey, heads up, saying, hey, we're gonna go do this tours, anybody wanna join? Because I, I would have.
Yeah.
Not even though the weather sounded, it was a little crap.
You know that, that hail, yeah, that hailstorm that rolled through last week, it was in the middle of that. It was not fun.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I would be curious to go see what it was all about.
Yeah, and we can.
Time with you and sort of stuff, so just, you know, maybe just a heads up.
Yeah, it was, it was a last minute thing, so apologies there, and we can, if, whoever's interested, we can set something up.
All right, council, make your council comments. How about Bernard?
Okay, I don't have much. So, just real quick, because I'm curious, the streetlights that came up in that one letter. So, it sounded like you can buy a three thousand K LED or a five thousand K LED. I, I, I don't, you know, do, do you, do you know, did we consider that? How did we make the decision on which light we bought? For the city administrator.
Um, I, I, no, I don't know the details. I know Derek worked with a, um, we actually went through a new sales rep than we had in the past, but it was similar to what we have gotten. I, I don't know the full details, I can do some research on it.
Oh, it's not a huge thing, but, I don't know, if, if three thousand is quote recommended by AMA, then I don't know, I feel like future lights should, should fit that bill, uh, assuming that's valid. Um, so, and I'm guessing that three thousand would be less than a five thousand, but who knows?
Yeah.
And this, this is kind of a, um, administrative note, but do we have a policy when someone sends a letter to be read? I mean, you could send council a, a twenty-page letter and say, I want this, I mean, do, do we put, not put a limit on this? I don't, I timed it, that was almost like a ten-minute letter that was read. And.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, it, it would, it would, soon as that five-minute timer went off, I would stop reading. I mean, I wouldn't deliberately read slow, but.
I know, but to me, it's like, citizens who want to submit comments in writing, they should be, they should be, put up, we should put a limit on that. They should, because basically, it's like unlimited, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I have no idea how long I was reading, so I, I, I couldn't tell you.
It was well over five minutes. Like I said, it was closer to ten.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not disparaging the, the, you know, the validity of the concern, but I feel like, you know, I'm sorry, someone could abuse this if we don't have limits. So, um, I think that's something this council should consider. And then, I think this got kicked around, but it, I would like to make a request that we revisit the consent issue. And, or, I'm sorry, consensus, how we determine consensus. And I, I would love if we could get that on maybe the next council meeting. Um, does this, is this group supportive of providing clarity on that conversation?
We already did it.
Yeah, we're done.
It's done, we already did.
Okay, all right, well, then I'll move on. Uh, let's see. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, I wanted, um, speak to, uh, public comment. There has never been any option for a sanctuary city discussed at this council or in paper to be considered. It came up in social media, online. We have never considered sanctuary city. We have considered, um, statements or proclamations or resolutions of inclusion. The river county just passed one. Just saying it out loud that we include every demographic of person that lives in Cascade Locks. So there's that, and on the bird, on the lights, I, I have bird written, I did speak with Rachel back before we adopted moving to the LEDs, and I did bring to council, um, uh, uh, a venue this whole part. I, at that time, I was interested in, uh, the, the lights affecting bird migrations. And we, the council still voted for LED. I know that Councilman Pruitt brought up maybe some filters. As the world evolves, I imagine more kinds of filters could be put on, I mean, guys, to reduce their danger, and in this idea that the person who wants that might pay for that. I'm not asking you to research it now, but in the future, that's something we could do. And then, I agree with Councilman Seager that let's make sure our next new purchases are the lower, if we do find that that's helpful. Um, I just wanted to say, I did go to McCann as a board member. I think I will only be on the board for the end of, uh, Councilman, uh, former Councilman Miller's term till September, and then it flips over to the river. Um, and they did the big goals of the year. Uh, we were not necessarily on them, although the port of Cascade Locks and the city both had downtown improvements as one of our number one goals. We, um, uh, was determined that maybe we weren't quite ready for a big McCann push on that yet. Um, although we, they are working with us on the city hall with the Brownfield Grant. And another ci, uh, business in town is taking advantage of the Brownfield Grant. If you don't remember, it's free building inspections in the tents of thousands of dollars, free. And anybody who has a building, the, in downtown can apply for that, um, with McCann. And I just wanted to point that that's Mid-Columbia Economic Development District. Uh, and I will try to put on our local social medias for communication, uh, of this, that we developed a report on how building and business owners can reach out for help, because that was brought up today by somebody else. Um, and so, and on that note, we spoke sometimes the last couple of years about we don't really have a social service guide, and it's, I made one, and I'll bring it to y'all. Four elderly people in their buildings, there are four, you know, like, here's one, I'm gonna give them a call here, because it's all in the river. I did bring that up at McCann too, that we have no social services. We thank goodness for the traveling, um, medical van, and now they're bringing food. Uh, so, anybody who talks to folks who need help, whether they're living in a derelict building, I hope you will begin to search out resources, and hopefully this city, we can have a list, and I'll try to get some to you. Um, and then I just want to point out, I give you pay attention, I'm an educator, so I, I pay attention to these months. Celebrations, Women History Month, I want to thank all the, the women, uh, on this council and government, and uh, in Cascade Locks, we have business owners, moms, work, you know, so many. I feel that Cascade Locks has been very, uh, gender equitable toward all genders that we have met. It's also Developmental Disabilities Month, so, um, just bearing in mind, um, you know, as we go forward in our future, in our communications, in our planning, are we planning for all accessibilities in our town, be they physical or developmental. Um, and then Monday, although we don't really take the time off here, we do, at my college I teach in California, is so, so Travis Day, uh, if you don't know, Travis was a Navy veteran. For the first, which is now the United Farmers Union and the Civil Rights Activists for Latina People, so we welcome, want to, you know, honor that to our community, our Latina community, and welcome them, as well as, uh, May thirty-first. Or March thirty-first is Transgender Awareness Day, in which we, we have transgender people in Cascade Locks. Acknowledging that transgender people exist are welcome and a part of the population we represent as well. That's what I want to say.
All right, thanks. Um, yeah, and the streetlights, I, I think he said something about a shield, we can pay for a shield, have a shield to put around, but, uh, at the same, and my concern was bats. Because we do have lots of bats, and we do want them, they do have something, they infiltrated with it, but so, yeah, I, I appreciate that there's a discussion going on. Um, have we, have you decided on any just, uh, changes, uh, being made to the dumpster days, so that everybody has? Did you, did, are we considering any changes?
Not at the moment. I, I mean, there isn't really a good way to do it without paying staff overtime.
Uh, the mayor and I were able to attend the, uh, legal. Uh, uh, the mayor and I were able to attend the, uh, Lego Oregon City Small Cities Meeting in Moro, and it's just really, uh, interesting to hear that, I mean, we all face the same struggles, it's finances, it's, I mean, it's just, it's finances, infrastructure, security, uh, portable housing, the issues are all the same, it's just how, how do we, how do we get there? Um, and, um, and we also got to sharing, you know, how different forms of, of funding, you know, giving money, and, uh, I, there are a couple of, uh, different organizations were, uh, mentioned. And I wonder if we've checked into maybe, uh, looking at the Ford Foundation, I know we've gotten a grant a long time ago in the past for something.
Fire department.
The fire department.
Fire trust.
Yeah, so maybe we could look, um, for that sort of money for the, the building here, or the future building or whatever it is, and then there's also, um, the Oregon Community Foundation. So I don't know, I don't know if those are resources that we can use, and then they also talked, us, also talked about, uh, have we looked into text my gov? Or our, our communications, I don't know, how, we.
We have, yeah.
We, we get our communications from the nine-one-one, right?
Yeah, the Everbridge reverse nine-one-one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then also, uh, the port has, uh, grant funding, I don't know if that application time is up, but I'm wondering if, I, Bernard, do you have trouble hearing some things when, during the meetings, you have trouble hearing, I mean, it's the, I, I know it's approved better, but I've, I've heard a complaint that it's not, sometimes you just can't hear what people are saying at the meetings, is that accurate?
Right, I, thi- this evening, there were a couple of instances when I couldn't hear you, and I couldn't hear council member Baker. Uh, I could always hear the mayor and, uh, council member bump, fine, as well as the city administrator, but the two of you, uh, in a few occasions, I would say ninety percent of what you said I heard clearly, but there was about ten percent where you, you faded out, that's true.
So we're still having issues, I mean, we're still, they're not as big as they were before, so I'm wondering if maybe we can talk to the port about getting a grant for improved, because they use it too, improving our audio system, so that it works, works for everybody. And if not for an audio system, how about new chairs, because these chairs are like, what, twenty years old now? They've been here for a long time.
Bob Willoughby days.
Yes, Bob Willoughby days.
So thirty.
That was a long time ago, yeah, I was, yeah, so, I mean, maybe we can push the port for that, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if the window of opportunity for applications have gone, but, um, and then also, we got our tri-city, uh, our, our waste, hazardous waste thing, and in here, just because we have some medications that we can try to get rid of, it says here that, uh, city hall is a place that we can get rid, on their, on their website, it says that city hall is a place to be able to drop off.
Yes.
An expired mess, okay, so that is, that is.
Yep, there's, there's, um, bags up front, you can drop stuff in.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Only ways to be, and I heard justice court also is.
I don't know, what it says online is the library and city hall, that's what their website says, I, I don't get it.
But do you not have to take those bags and mail them off, or what? What, how do you dispose of those bags?
Yeah.
I believe, we, I don't think I've actually, we've ever had anything actually, since I've been here, actually, turned in.
When I first did it, I took it home, I had to do it, and I think I had to mail it, but I don't know, I can't remember that far back.
I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I just, I mean, I was just, because I, we, we have a bag, we've been holding on to, we tried to give to the, the, because you used to be able to give them to the sheriff, the police.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't take them, and, uh, but I think you can drop them off at the sheriff's office, but, 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 yeah, so I just wanna make sure that that's an accurate statement, that we can drop it off here at city hall, because it's what it says online. And thank you for sweeping the streets, man, I just, it is so, it is so nice getting the streets swept and not having to worry about, because that gravel is just, will knock down your butt if you don't step on it, just right sometimes, so I really do appreciate that we still continue to do that service, I, I know it's, we didn't put a lot down this year, but, you know, it's just, it's nice to get, get the streets around, thank you.
All right. All right, as Tiffany said, we went to the small city LLC meeting in Moro, and I came back with, uh, the two-on-one information, I gave it to the city administrator, and it's where you can get housing, food, childcare, utilities, and healthcare, and it's in Spanish and English. So hopefully, they can come out here and tell us more about it, and that's a resource for the citizens to be able to get some services. They also said that it, they could help with funding too, I don't know what kind of funding, but they are a good resource. Um, and then in the past two weeks, I went to the museum board meeting, um, that was good, um, they're probably gonna do a little ex- exhibition on the Martin car, and I met with this city administrator twice. And I'm trying to meet with all the counselors one-on-one, and, um, city administrators can, we're working on how do we can get community engagement, where a counselor's administrator signs up to meet with different times, days, and different businesses, so the community can engage with us without it being in this formal setting. Um, and thanks for all the community members in attendance. Um, the other thing that, um, me and city administrator have been talking about is researching YouTube Live with closed caption. Uh, maybe it will be easier for citizens to get to, so, maybe we'll get more citizens participating, uh, so we'll see what that looks like. Um, and then just a little note on the bathrooms, I was on council when the bathrooms were paying to be, and it was never to be a burden on the city, all these businesses in town that had, do not offer bathrooms, I think they should be paying it. You know, because you've got gas stations that have all bathrooms, you've got burger joints that are busy like crazy, they don't have bathrooms, so I think businesses that don't offer bathrooms should get this cost, because it is important that we have bathrooms, but it was never to be a burden on the city, ever. And then, in Moro, we were there for, um, the small city thing, and it was so nice in their council chambers, it's so little, it's like a closet compared to here, but they had old pictures like of the town, and there were canvases, and they were all over, and it was so nice, and I'm wondering if we can't do something like that, some old pictures of the town, and just to kinda make our, our council chambers look better. It looked really nice, that, you know, so, just that, and then, um, I wanted to mention Ralph Hesgaard has passed, he actually served as a councillor from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and four. He also stepped up as mayor from two thousand and four to two thousand and six, he passed away, his service, I believe, was on the twenty-ninth at two P M. And I wanted to let his family know that we, here at the city and council are thinking of them, and, um, thank him for his service. And that's all I've got, we can go on to executive session.
So we need to move to.
He's such a.
Or, yeah, we need to, yeah.
Yeah, I'll say, are we right here?
Six-six-zero-two-D labor negotiations.
Consultations.
Consultations.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And post, nay, okay, adjourn my pause.
Yep, pause it.
Yeah, I, I need to adjourn.
All right, second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, adjourned.
Thank you.
Oh, Bernard?
Hi.
Bernard, your Mount Hood endorsement.
So I emailed that to Kathy, um, like, a week ago, or a couple days ago.
She says no. She disagrees with you.
All right, I'll find the email, but, um, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, see, I forgot to mention, you guys gotta do, make sure you're gonna.